I'd like to now call this meeting of the Coventry Town Council to order at 6:00 PM. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Pasqua is not present tonight. Councilmember Lugwig?
Here.
Councilmember Shockley?
Here.
Councilmember LeBlanc?
Here.
President Lima?
Here. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. The flag is in our hearts.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please note for those in attendance tonight, in the event of an emergency, you may exit out the back door, any of the other doors that have exit signs on them, and exit out onto the front, to the front of the high school. Moving on to meeting minutes from prior meetings. Item A, June 22nd, 2023, do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Vice President Blank.
I'll second it.
Second by Councilmember Shockley, discussion. Clerk, did you receive any edits for these minutes?
I did not.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Lugwig?
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
For in the affirmative, zero when the negative motion passes.
Could I have a motion to take the agenda out of order?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Motion by Vice President Blank, second by Councilmember Shockley, any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Lugwig?
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
For in the affirmative, zero when the negative motion passes.
Moving on to item 8A, Resolutions. Resolution 2023-45, authorizing the town manager to file an application for a CDBG grant on behalf of the Coventry Housing Authority, starts on page 17 of your packet to page 29. The resolution reads as follows, "Whereas in the town of Coventry, funding is available under the Rhode Island Community Development Block Grant Program administered by the Department of Administration, Division of Planning, Office of Housing and Community Development, and the Governor of the State of Rhode Island has authorized the Director of said department to disburse such funds, and it is in the best interest of the citizens of the town of Coventry that an application be made to undertake a local community development block grant program through the Coventry Housing Authority for the following projects: replacing two residential building roofs, a community hall roof, and the siding replacement on six residential buildings and a community hall. Now therefore be it resolved that the Coventry Town Council, one, authorize the town manager to file an application through the planning department for the amount of $541,650 to implement upgrades to Coventry Housing Authority's North Road Terrace property for the CDBG rolling application for program 20-year, 2020-2021, with the Office of Housing and Community Development. The town manager is hereby further authorized and directed to provide any additional information or documents required by said office of housing and community development to make any assurances required in connection to this program, to execute an agreement with the state of Rhode Island, and to otherwise act as the representative of the town of Coventry in all matters relating to this application and any award which may be based upon this application." Do I hear a motion to approve the resolution?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Vice President Blank?
I'll second it.
Second by Councilmember Shockley, discussion. Town Manager Pirlo, any comments on this?
Yes, the Planning Commission approved this same resolution last night at their Planning Commission meeting, and that's part of the process in order to move this forward for Julie Letty and the Coventry Housing Authority. So this is more of a process resolution to get the ball rolling and get her application in for these much-needed funds.
Thank you. Any discussion from members of the council? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Lugwig?
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
For in the affirmative, zero when the negative motion passes.
Moving on to public hearing ordinances, item A, public hearing for discussion and/or action to amend Chapter 131 Flood Plane Management to comply with the Federal Emergency Management Agency FEMA directive. This starts on page 31 of your packets. Do I hear a motion to open public hearing?
I'll make the motion.
Motion from Vice President Blank?
I'll second it.
Second from Councilmember Shockley, discussion. Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Lugwig?
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
For in the affirmative, zero when the negative, the motion passes.
Assistant Manager Broadbent is here, I believe, to speak to this, if you could just give a few comments, this is the second time this is before us, I believe.
I usually worry about whether you can see me or not. Good evening, Madam President, members of the council, Maria Broadbent, Assistant Town Manager. The FEMA Flood Plane Program is the federal program for residents to be able to get flood plane insurance for their properties. The town has been part of the program for many years, and it requires periodic updates as required by the federal FEMA-
Excuse me, one second, Mr. Houghton, can you turn her up for us? We have, oh, it's as high as it goes? Okay, thank you.
I can speak louder.
Thanks.
And this is the requirement for us to update the code periodically whenever they require, the hearing is part of the process, we're required to put these changes into effect by July 19th. There are no substantial changes, there's an update to the firm maps, the maps that are used to determine where the flood plane is in particular areas in town, and also a requirement that any construction that's done below the level of the flood plane is done in such a way that it's water-resistant, or any electrical or mechanical equipment is done in the same way or elevated above the flood plane, and also the requirement that we enforce it. Many of those requirements, with the exception of slight changes to the map, are things that we already do, and they're in the building code, but we're required to also include them in the flood plane code, so that's why I'm here.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, could you indicate that all the aspects for the public hearing were met, the advertisements and such?
I did not.
What? This had to have an ad placed, correct?
Yes, yes, we did.
We'll now, is that it?
Yes, thank you.
We'll now open it up to public hearing, are there any members of the public who would like to make a comment on this ordinance, flood plane ordinance? Anyone who would like to can come forward and state their name and address for the record. That's okay. Going once, going twice, three times? Yes?
I was just gonna say thank you for moving it up on the agenda, I appreciate it.
Do I hear a motion to close public hearing?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Motion from Vice President Blank, second from Councilmember Shockley, any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Lugwig?
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
For in the affirmative, zero when the negative motion passes.
Moving on to the ordinance. To introduce discussion, do I hear a motion to amend the ordinance?
I'll make the motion.
Motion from Vice President Blank?
I'll second it.
Second from Councilmember Shockley, discussion from the council? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Lugwig?
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
For in the affirmative, zero in the negative, motion passes.
Moving on to item three, public comment on docketed items, at this time, we'll accept public comment on any docketed items, you can come forth and state your name and address for the record. Public comment on docketed items. Good evening, just state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Kelly Aronakis. Kelly Aronakis, President Coventry Teachers Alliance, 3 Hazel Street. Just want to thank the council for having a special meeting this evening to address the teachers' contracts. I'm sure you have a lot of residents here that are here for that reason, so I do appreciate you taking the time, and I think I just want to just sum up what a lot of the feeling is in the audience. I think when we got into education as teachers several years ago, it was truly a noble profession. You did so because it was your passion, it's what you wanted to do. Many, many things have changed, state, national levels, putting a ton of pressure on education, on communities, on councils, on school boards, whether you're conservative, whether you're liberal, you're looking at curricula. I just think that education is one of the foundations of what a town needs to thrive. And what we're finding now is although education is still a noble profession, it's become extremely difficult. You know, teachers tend to be blamed for all the woes of everything that happens. You know, I hope you're looking at the news recently, Coventry Public Schools AP exam scores exceeded this national, global, and state average in every single exam taken by over 20 percentage points. To exceed those averages by over 20 percentage points, that's an absolute credit to the students and how hard they work, but also credit to their teachers. And what we're finding is education gets harder and harder, although teachers still love education, they're now moving where the money is because the job's so hard. I'm sure you're a little warm right now, but these are the conditions we work in every day. So when we come back, our rooms are gonna be 90-plus. And it doesn't sound like a big deal, but if you have to work all day in a room that's over 90 degrees for a month or so, it's a lot. In the winter, when you work in rooms that are into the low to mid 50s, it's a lot. So I just think when you have different districts around you that are building schools and putting in air and making sure their HVA systems are working well, teachers tend to go where they're better paid and where the conditions are working better. So I really hope you look at the contract tonight, I hope you believe it's fair, the teachers that are in the audience tonight have given back three times over the past 12 years. We're just asking for fair raises, and I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Welcome, please just state your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Erica Halbogan, I live at 7 Red Maple Road in Coventry. Just thank you all for listening to us tonight, it's very appreciative, but I just wanted to state and kind of carry over what Kelly was saying, that Coventry is home to a hard-working, middle-class families and individuals. Key to entrance and maintenance of middle-class status is education, most specifically access to higher education and skills-based training. Anything less increasingly deters the possibility to reach and to preserve the threshold of the middle class. A person needs to have the skills to access the path to higher education and skills-based training, crucial skills gained in public schools. Public schools exist to ensure the attainment and continuance of the middle class and the ability to move beyond. Equality public education is imperative to secure the longevity, endurance of a strong middle-class community like Coventry. Key to sustaining quality public schools is employing well-trained and experienced teachers. Like any other industry, an investment must be made in the recruitment and retention of teachers, an investment demonstrated by the town council's ratification of a fair teacher contract upholding teachers' working conditions. Teachers' working conditions are not only Coventry children's learning conditions, but are also the important path securing all Coventry children's access to higher education and skills-based training. Quality learning conditions secure middle-class attainment and beyond for Coventry, and is imperative to the success of this community. I ask the town council to secure the path to attaining and maintaining a strong middle-class community by voting for the teacher contract. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Amy, just state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Amy Anzalone, 11 Orchid Trail. I'm a resident of Coventry and the Assistant Superintendent of Coventry Public Schools. Tonight, I will speak for the school department. Superintendent Cowart is traveling out of state and wishes he could be here to advocate for the town council's support of this new contract. I hope to paint a clear picture of the negotiating process and what our administrative priorities were entering into these negotiations. For us, the process began in January when Mr. Cowart, with the cooperation of the school committee, began to form a negotiating team. The town and the council were invited to sit on our team and participate in our process. As a district administrative team, we began to set priorities. We met as a full team and began to, I'm sorry, began negotiations in March through the month of April. We came to a good faith agreement and let the town know during executive session in early May that through creative thinking and problem-solving, we believe we had settled on a fair contract that is beneficial to both sides. The school department responded to the town's questions, met with, and had phone calls with individual members of the town council. I hope that we answered your questions. Simultaneously, Dawn and I met with the finance team many times to tighten our belts and put forth a balanced budget that despite the monetary increases in this contract, we asked for no more than what the council recommended. We were transparent, upfront, responsible, and worked in the best interest of our schools, and we believe this town, my town. Three priorities were at the forefront of our negotiations. One, to enhance the safety and connections for our students. Two, to formulate more professional growth opportunities which ultimately lead to better teaching and learning. And three, most importantly, we believed that we needed to invest in our teachers. Compared to any other aspect of schooling, teachers have the greatest impact on student achievement. Study after study has shown this. Teachers simplify the complex. Teachers expose children to ideas and topics that they might not otherwise come into contact with. Teachers expand on interests and push students to do better. Teachers are a source of motivation. They teach valuable skills like communication, compassion, presentation, organization, and much more. Coventry needs to attract and retain the best teachers. Teachers are the backbone of my and your community. Great teachers, great schools, and a great community. I ask that you trust our work, and please support this contract. Thank you.
Thank you. Just state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, I'm Susan Smith, 33 Pembroke Lane.
Just come right up to the microphone for me.
Susan Smith?
Use that teacher voice.
You don't want me to do that. 33 Pembroke Lane. Back in May, I reached out to Councilwoman Lima, but I wanted to take this opportunity to address the entire town council and elaborate on the message that I left for her. I've been a teacher in Coventry for 22 years, and during that time, I've seen several instances where teachers have come to the aid of the town through gives-backs and through concessions. But I'm also aware, as you all must be, that in light of nationwide inflation, businesses across the board have raised salaries in an effort to keep pace with inflation and to retain their workforce. In fact, the Social Security Administration approved and implemented a nearly 6% increase in 2022 and an 8.7% increase just this past January. I'm simply asking that you show your teachers that you respect and support them by approving the new contract with its modest salary increases because they are reasonable, fair, and they're well-deserved. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public for public comment on docketed items only? Going once, going twice, three times? Public comment is now closed. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session for the following, per closed session pursuant to Rhode Island General Law Section 42-46-5A2, recollective bargaining of the Coventry Teachers Alliance contract. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Motion by Vice President Blank, second by Councilmember Shockley, discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Lugwig?
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
For in the affirmative, zero, and the negative motion passes.
We will now go into executive session. We're so sorry, we're just going into executive session.
Do I hear a motion to come out of executive session?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Motion by Vice President Blank, second by Councilmember Shockley. Discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Lugwick?
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Four and the affirmative, zero, and the negative motion passes.
Do I hear a motion to seal the minutes of executive session?
I'll make the motion.
Oh, I'll second it. We are sealing the moments of executive session.
A motion from Vice President LeBlanc, second by Councilmember Shockley. Any discussion? Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Lugwick?
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Four and the affirmative, zero, and the negative motion passes.
Members of the public, the council met in executive session pursuant to Rhode Island General Law, Section 42-46-5A2, recollective bargaining of the Coventry Teachers Alliance contract. A discussion was had, no votes were taken. Moving on to, back to item 8B, Resolution 2023-46, Approval of the Contract Between the Town of Coventry and the Coventry Teachers Alliance, CTA, From August 31st, 2023 to August 31st, 2026. Members of the council, this is on page 30 in your packets. The resolution reads as follows: Whereas in the Town of Coventry, The contract between the Town of Coventry School Committee And the Coventry Teachers Alliance Local 1075 Spires on August 31st, 2023, and the Coventry School Committee and the school administration And representatives from the Coventry Teachers Alliance Have negotiated a provisional new three-year agreement, Pending council approval, and the members of the CTA Local 1075, Along with the Coventry School Committee have voted to approve said contract, And now therefore be it resolved that the Honorable Town Council Approves the contract from August 31st, 2023 to August 31st, 2026, Negotiated by the Coventry School Committee and the Coventry Teachers Alliance, 1075 in accordance with Section 3.14-0 Of the Town of Coventry's Home Rule Charter, including funding the fiscal note, Totalling approximately $6,136,605.40. First, I just want to thank you all for coming out tonight and, um, And being in this hot room, which the AC, I guess, broke recently. Thank you for participating, thank you for those that made public comment, And thank you, Coventry teachers, for all that you do, And you, and for what you do to make this community what it is. Most know that I come from Wizard Country, But I'm starting to accumulate some ochre red recently, but thank you for all that you do. So at this time, I'll seek a motion. What's the pleasure of the council?
I'll make a motion to continue this agenda item until August 15th, 2023.
I have a motion from Vice President LeBlanc to continue. It's August 15th. Are you second?
I'll second it.
Second from Councilmember Shockley. Discussion? Um, so, ahead of this meeting today, Finance Director for the Town, Bob Savetti, And the Finance Director for the School Department, Mr. Sands, As well as Mr. DeVerna, were confirming and finalizing numbers on the fiscal note, And there was an agreement made that there's a $1.1 million discrepancy found. Uh, the $1.1 million is the, um, the Medicare and the pension impact. Um, so we'd like those groups to come back together and make sure, and finalize that, So we have a more accurate number. $1.1 million is, is a big number to, to find out as a discrepancy. So we want to have the most accurate number possible to make the decision. That's a big one, um, so that's why we're, we're looking to continue this evening. Um, I apologize. I thank you for your patience, Um, and, um, looking forward to the next steps. So, um, Any discussion from members of the council? Manager Perillo? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Lugwick?
Yes.
Councilmember Shockley?
Yes.
Vice President LeBlanc?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Four and the affirmative, zero, and the negative motion passes.
At this time, we'll open up public comment for undocketed items. That's anything that was not on our agenda this evening. Any member of the public like to make a public comment on an undocketed item? Going once. Welcome. Just state your name and address for the record. Undocketed, sir. Undocketed, sir. Just make sure the mic's right up to your mouth, because it's tough to hear up here.
How are we doing?
Great.
Yeah.
Just state your name and address for the record for me?
Yeah, my name's Steve Riley, vocal resident. I've provided information to you folks in the past in terms of Johnson's Pond information related to the history and constitutional questions and statutory questions. I've also provided to you recently something about home rule, and I didn't know if you folks had had a chance to look at them or had any questions. I just wanted to be available, if you did.
Awesome, thank you. I'd instruct members of the council, if they have any further questions based on what he has sent us, if you could just connect with him or give him your council business card, you can connect offline. Thank you very much.
And one last question, if I could, if I could direct this to Mr. Angel. Has Mr. Eske been informed of these pieces of information, research, and home rule questions?
We have our, one of our assistant solicitors here tonight, he's not involved in the...
I'm sorry.
Yes, this is Mr. David Igliozzi. He traditionally does, yes, he traditionally does our planning and zoning legal work. Mr. Angel's on vacation this week.
My apologies.
No worries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other members of the public here, public comment on undocketed items? Going once. Going twice. Three times, public comment on undocketed items is now closed. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn at 7:31 PM.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Motion by Vice President Blank, second by Councilmember Shockley. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it, we stand adjourned.